Evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 3rd Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, go ahead and call the meeting to order. Everyone is present. If everyone could stand for the invocation and the pledge, please.
If we'll face the flag, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I didn't know there was an order to that. I do now. I learned. Most gracious heavenly Father, first, we want to thank you for your blessings upon this county and the people in it and all other people who need your help and guidance. Make this a good meeting, help us to listen, and make good decisions. I'm in.
Amen.
Now we can face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved.
Second. It has been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote. And if we could now move on to the public addresses to the board. Manager, do we have anyone signed up?
We have several people signed up to speak. If the attorney would read the introductory statement, then we can go through your list of names.
Yes. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A speaker representing a group of individuals in attendance will be allowed five minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking, and I will keep your time.
First person signed up is Molly Holdeman.
Thank you, Commissioners and staff. My name is Molly Holdeman. My address is 776 White Horse Drive, Greenville. And one year ago, almost to this very day, I and others spoke against Compute North getting a special use permit to build a crypto mine on Belvoir School Road, warning that crypto is a virtual currency based only on the whims of human emotion. The energy consumption is outrageously wasteful and detrimental to the environment, and the noise would ruin the quality of life for our Belvoir neighbors and the students and staff at my daughter's school. This body realized that the company was not presenting itself as it really was. Since that time, the value of Bitcoin has plummeted, and, as you may have read in the reflector, a little over a week ago, Compute North fired their CEO, Dave Perle, and filed for bankruptcy. Greenville and Pitt County did more than dodge a bullet. None of us are subjected to the torture of ceaseless noise of a crypto mine. We ratepayers have not incurred increased light bills due to GUC overruns on its contract with Duke Energy, and we taxpayers do not have to pay for the disposal of Compute North's crypto modules. Unfortunately, however, the Greenville City Council did not communicate with you to inquire about the reservations that you had and did not see or chose to ignore Compute North's chicanery, and the January 24 zoning ordinance allowing crypto mining is still in the city code. I hope that the city council will look to your example of ensuring smart growth for the area by codifying required consideration of environmental impacts of economic development, and I hope that it will reverse that ordinance. One day last spring, I was getting out of my car at Belvoir Elementary, and it dawned on me how incredibly peaceful it was at that moment. And I said a prayer of thanksgiving to God for that tranquility. Tonight, I want to say thank you to each of you for saving your jurisdiction from crypto, for moving to prevent bad actors from coming in in the future, and for promoting the quality of life that we so treasure in Pitt County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
My name is Jeff Monaco. I live at 3837 Lockhaven Lane in Grimesland. Can you hear me? In Grimesland, I am the interim chair of the Cypress Group of the Sierra Club. The Cypress Group is the face of the Sierra Club for Eastern North Carolina. We represent 19 counties in northeastern North Carolina, where we advocate and instruct on the environment and talk about subjects such as this. And I'm here to talk about the economic development also. We talked with Commissioner Huggins earlier this week, and she was supportive of the environment, and I definitely appreciate that. And I just wanted to add that economic development, we definitely need economic development. We need good jobs. We need to be improving our economy, and if we're not, we're falling behind, and everybody else is moving ahead. So we need economic development. We need to go forward, and, and then there's, that's a point, and we also need to protect the environment. In eastern North Carolina, we have a wonderful connection to the environment, and I'd like to continue with that, make it strong and protect it. Then I also want to add, a month or so ago, I was at another public hearing with the DEQ, and it was on wood pellets up in Hosky, and towards the end of the hearing, a young college student got up to speak, and the college student said that she was speaking out against the wood pellet plant, and she also said that 2050 is the very key year. And if you think of what you've read about the, or heard about the environmental models, 2050 talks about when things really get bad, I guess. Much of the ice cap will have melted, much damage to the glaciers, sea levels will have risen, global warming will be higher. They're even talking about in 2050 having trouble with feeding people, famine, and then instability of governments. Well, getting back to this college student who was about 20, she said, "In the year 2050, I'll only be middle-aged." So that got me thinking, because in 2050, if I'm still around, I'm not going to be very much involved in anything, but she and her generation, her peers, will have to take care of things. So that the decisions we make today will definitely affect 2050 and will affect these models that the scientists have created about what is going to occur with environmental change. So I just urge everyone to make decisions based upon not just extracting money from the environment for today, but also spending money today to ensure the environment is strong in the year 2050 for all the young people we know. Thank you.
Susan Redding.
My name is Susan Redding. I live at 601 South Elm Street in Greenville. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a member of NOTRA, the North River Association, and also the local Cypress Group of the Sierra Club that Jeff spoke of, but I'm speaking tonight as a 43-year resident of Greenville and as a retired healthcare provider. Can you hear me okay? I'm in support of any effort on the part of the county commissioners to include an environmental and health effects screen when considering the establishment of or operation of any business requesting permission to operate in Pitt County. I feel it's the responsibility of our elected councils and commissioners to consider the potential ill health and/or environmental effects of any business that wants to operate here in Pitt County. As Jeff said, we all want robust government, robust development in our communities, but in considering that, we don't want it, that kind of development, at the expense of poor health for some or all of our citizens, or the detrimental effects on our shared environment. So I hope you'll consider all of these thoughts as you go forward, thinking about who we want as our neighbors, our industrial neighbors, or any business associates that may want to move into Pitt County. We appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Jaylen Lampa.
Can you guys hear me all right? Wonderful. Well, good evening, first of all. My name is Jaylen Lampa, and I'm also a member of NOTRA. I was originally going to make a speech informing you about the situation with the WorldCat boat building facility and the emissions that it will be releasing, but at this point, I think you've all heard quite a lot about it. So I instead decided to address something that stuck out to me at the Greenville City Council meeting on September 8th, and how it reflects the general attitude of many of those holding the level of, the levers of power, at least the attitude that they seem to possess. Constituents express their concerns about WorldCat posing a threat to the ecological safety of North Greenville, and several of them made it known that they believe the council and the Eastern North Carolina Alliance, ENC, the consulting firm responsible for inviting WorldCat into Greenville, should provide further insight into the impacts on the ecosystem, sorry, oversight, and communities by the company and others like it. At this, Mayor PJ Connolly was among those who believe that NOTRA members and other concerned citizens, and has since wanted city council to cherry pick what industries were allowed to set up shop in Greenville and to create a system that picks winners and losers in today's economic climate. In my opinion, they've already been doing that. They've already been cherry picking. They've already been deciding winners and losers in this system, except the winners are the companies like WorldCat, whom they invited and provided thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars as an incentive, if not millions, despite the fact that they have a dubious track record in Tarboro, their mother facility, with keeping their emissions recorded, and the fact that this facility will be across the street from a children's education center and aquatics and fitness center. For those of you who don't know, these emissions are hazardous air pollutants and volatile organic compounds, including styrene, which is linked to create, well, sorry, linked with a development of leukemia in certain tests by the EPA. The losers are those children who will breathe in those chemicals. It'll be the workers who are exposed to them every day as they go to this factory, and it'll be the community and the environment in the surrounding area that has historically been at the back end of this city's priorities. Mayor Connolly seems to pride his administration on stimulating economic growth in Greenville, and I won't deny that he has. However, the industrial barons of the 1800s thought they were doing the same thing on the scale of the country, and history shows that they presided over an era of socia, of ec, excuse me, economic inequality and the destruction of the environment. So-called progress that comes at the cost to working-class people regardless of their identity is no progress at all. It is only the enrichment of the powerful and affluent few. Sorry, I'm stuttering. My mouth gets dry. This is not a sustainable policy stance, both for the environment and for the next generation that will inherit the responsibility of protecting it. As a member of that generation, I am asking you, nay, I am begging you, as those currently responsible for its protection, to take a more active stance than some of our city council members, and do whatever you can to protect this city and this county as a whole. It is our responsibility as the heralds, sorry, the stewards of this world, to paraphrase scripture, to protect it, ensure it's a place worth living in, and I believe all of you, everyone here, shares that same sentiment, and I believe that together we can accomplish that goal. Thank you.
I am Ann Maxwell, and I've lived in Pitt County since the fall of 1966, when I came here to school, and I love this county, and I want it to be a healthy county with healthy economic development, healthy citizens, and a healthy environment. In fact, they're interconnected. The Pitt County Economic Development states its mission is to promote job growth, diversify the county's economy, and expand the local tax base. I would like words added such as healthy job growth and diversified economy with cleaner jobs. We need to strengthen, oh, and I looked at the NC East Alliance website and saw that one of the statements there was that we need to strengthen our rural health care. I believe that we need to look at ways to keep our citizens healthier so that they don't need to be a part of the health care system. The recent hearing for a permit for WorldCat Greenville brought many issues out into the open. In the area north of the river where WorldCat is located, there appears to be environmental justice issues. A report prepared by the Southern Environmental Law Center stated that the area around WorldCat is already burdened by numerous sources of pollution, and one of the statements, or one of the paragraphs in this report was just really scary to me. Pitt County ranks 34th in the state in health factors and 39th in health outcomes and performed worse than the state average for most death rates that are included in the DEQEJ tool. These outcomes are despite Pitt County having a per capita primary care physician rate that is considerably higher than the state average. Moreover, the rate of hospitalizations due to asthma in Pitt County are more than twice as high as the state average, and preventable hospital stays have increased in recent years. But I felt hopeful, as I read last night, this document that's about the candidates who are running, and I read what all of the county commissioner candidates said, and several of them have mentioned environmental concerns. So I feel that this commission can move us in a different direction. Thank you.
Lisa Tyson?
My name is Lisa Tyson, and I live on 1310 State and House Road, Greenville, North Carolina. I'm the vice president of the North of the River Association, also referred to as NOTRA. I'm speaking on behalf of our president, Elwood Carter, as well as our community north of the river, and all of Greenville citizens, including you all. I'm commenting in favor of the resolution on environmental issues when recruiting for new companies north of the Tar River, as well as Greenville as a whole. Pitt County, North Carolina, is home to some of the best institutions in the state. With a population of over 170,000, we are the 14th most populous county in North Carolina and home to businesses and industries that are connected globally. Our county governor is staffed and managed by talented and well-educated individuals. The elected officials are knowledgeable and state that they are representing their constituents. With such a well-placed administration, staff, and elected officials, why is there a segment of Pitt County neglected and/or discriminated against in almost every area? We are referring to towns and communities north of Pitt County or north of the river. This portion of Pitt County is literally and factually neglected, ignored, and dumped on. We struggle to obtain a good quality of life. Businesses are allowed to locate north of the river with no quality oversight. The recent approval of a boat manufacturing company, WorldCat, without proper oversight relative to air quality is but one example of the blatant disregard for citizens living north of the river. Streets, roads, cul-de-sacs, and ditches are poorly maintained, if at all. Business and industry do not engage with citizens living north of the river. It is apparent that most of the resources from businesses and industries located in our community are going into Greenville and other areas in Pitt County. We are witnessing families struggling from the effects of low or no resources for our communities. Our children are suffering from air pollutants, excessive noise from trains, airplanes, factories, industry traffic, lack of recreational facilities, and little to no resources beyond their schools. We thank you all for what you have done to make Pitt County one of the most attractive counties in the state. However, we feel the need to remind you that we are good productive citizens who pay taxes, support our families, and strive to live a better life. When would north of the river receive the same resources, protection, and care as the rest of Pitt County? We care about our communities and will continue to remind you that you have a responsibility to families and communities north of the river. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Zip, and I am a resident of Greenville in Pitt County. My address is 105 Woodbury Drive. I just wanted to have sort of a, have the opportunity, and I wanted to first thank you all for inviting us out here to speak on this environmental matter. It's heartening to know that you all are taking this issue really, really seriously, and I will speak frankly on the issue that I'm, lived in Pitt County for 20 years, lived living in Greenville for 20 years, and I'm, I've also lived in other cities and counties across the state of North Carolina. I've lived most of my entire life in North Carolina, and I'm somewhat surprised that my own city, Greenville, is attracting or recruiting these companies that are really not very good or reliable or trustworthy companies in crypto, in a crypto north and Compute North and WorldCat. And I know that, having lived in other cities in North Carolina, that we should be recruiting companies that have better histories, that have better interests, that really want to be good citizens. Instead, we're getting companies that can't find anywhere else to do business because of their practices, their business practices. And so I think it's a, it's a really good opportunity to try to find ways to attract better, or to recruit better businesses, and the way to do that is to model the kind of policies that these businesses will be attracted by. So good companies that want to come to Pitt County are going to want to have all of the things that other counties and cities that we have to compete with can offer, and one of these things is attention to our community health and our community environmental, you know, quality. So I am very heartened to hear that you all are strongly considering some kind of proposal that will strengthen that and will encourage good companies to come to Pitt County and to Greenville. Thank you.
The last speaker signed up is Stephen Moisey.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Moisey. I live at 419 River Birch Drive in Greenville, and I am also a professor of geological sciences at ECU and the director of the, of ECU's Water Resources Center. So I'm really happy to be here tonight to be able to talk with you all, and especially follow up after all of these amazing people coming and sharing what they have to say, because as you've heard, right, economics and environment don't have to be separate. They can go hand in hand, and we can look for those solutions that can really drive things forward. As a scientist, as a water scientist, right, we constantly are looking at our environment and trying to understand, where are those challenges that we face? And it's, we understand also that it takes a lot of resources to understand what those problems are, right? Bringing in companies, we all want to do that, we all want to see those opportunities, but sometimes it's hard to know, you know, where are those problems that might come in, or when is a company not necessarily following up with all it should be doing? And so I think that's where it becomes so important, right, that when we hear the voices of people like this coming today and speaking, that really, we can do everything that we can to listen to those voices and try and promote them. And so finding those opportunities for partnership, where we can really lift up as a county, as a university, kind of those voices and find those opportunities to work together and find partnership, to find those solutions. Oftentimes, people out there in the environment are helping to identify these are the places where something is happening, and we just don't know about it because we don't have the resources, again, to necessarily go and do all the monitoring we need to, or check up on everything that we need to. So again, I want to just thank everybody, actually, for being here today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and just say, I think we really have a huge opportunity in Pitt County to be leaders in showing how we can move things forward in a constructive way and utilize all those resources that we have at our disposal, from the county to the university, to our citizens, to help us do that and really have a wonderful place to live. So thank you very much.
That's all that we have.
Okay. If we can now move on to the employee service awards.
Step forward, and Florida Harding can come forward.
Mr. Chairman and members in the audience and Board of Commissioners, this is our quarterly time of the year. It's always a pleasure to do where we recognize employees who have achieved 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service with Pitt County Government. So without further ado, I'll call the names of those who are present in each category, and then those who could not be here this evening to come forward. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate, and just so that there isn't any awkwardness, there's no expectation that you have to shake hands when you come forward. For five years of service with Pitt County Government, we have C.K. Angel Joyce Carmen, Pitt Area Transit. Thank you for your service. Ella Heath, Social Services. Joseph Michael Jordan, Sheriff's Office. Austin S. Dixon. Austin S Dixon， emergency management。Laura J Maynard， elections。Bradley K Bruington， emergency management。Chenelia Niche Cherry， financial services。Lynn Watson Evans， inspections。Marshall Lou Mulligan Hall， public health。Alan Henry Roebuck，警察局。和 James Singleton III 得罪处完成了我们的 5 年奖项。在10年 category 中， Allison Marie Stewart， public health。谢谢 Allison。Janesha Andrea Woolard，社会服务。谢谢，我们暂停一下。谢谢。在10年 category 中， 不在场的 Tabitha Outen， planning。和 Tammy Reese， public health。这就是我们的 10年 category。有15 年服务的北县政府 Paul Andrews Jr., PJ，北县 soil and water。和 Lisa Mercer， detention center。Lisa Mercer？ 好的。不在 15年 category 中的 Jimmy Hodges Jr., emergency management。Rebecca Rogers， tax administration。Robin Tant， public health。和 Kimberly Williams Ward， public health。这就是我们的 15年 category。在20年 category 中， 我们有 Johnny Barnhill， animal services。恭喜。Leanne Gabbert Wisman， detention center。好的。Ann Heath， tax administration。恭喜。是的，你做到了。Nancy Poston， detention center。恭喜。Brian Roberts， sheriff's office。Marilyn Russell， detention center。我们会认可不在 20年 category 中的 Channing Ford， veteran services。Oscar Howard， emergency management。Ralph Porter， emergency management。Paul Sands， detention center。和 Josephus Toller， detention center。这就是我们的 20年 category。在25年 category 中， 我们有一个与我们同在的 Katrina Vines， human resources。然后我们还有 Scotty McKinney 他 served 25年与管理信息系统相关的管理。这就是我们的 25年 category。她不在场， 但我们有一个在 30年 category 中的员工。Margarethe M Howard， social services。我对所有的人表示祝贺。继续工作。我们的意思就是， 他们每天都在进行行动。他们有价值，值得尊敬。我们不能为你服务。
只有几个铃铛。
Mike，你怎么能拍照片？
每个人都想每个人都想拍照片。那个小宝宝的表情。
好吧，我们继续到公开会议。
我们可以进入公开会议允许本区交通的决定 2023和2024 年。主持人。
今天晚上好。
今天晚上好。
如你所知， 这是一个 5311 资金的 recurring grant request。这一年， 美国和联邦政府采取了一些调整。所以今晚不会有资金请求。那会在下一个 calendar year。以及支持申请 5311 资金的结合的综合 grant 有 15% 的当地管理要求有 $35,610 使总金额增加 237,402 对各个社区交通项目通过各种费用。如果没有问题，
妻子，我们有谁签名？
如果你已经开了公开会议作为这项 grant 的一部分我们必须明确地说如果有人想在 proposed funding 有资格发言， 你现在就可以。这里有人想发言吗？ 有一个人没有参加。我们没有一个人参加公开会议。我看不到。
今天晚上我们关闭公开会议并支持上述 motions。它已经被正确地通过了。如果有人可以投票。motion passed unanimously。谢谢。既然如此， 到了公开会议中的第二项。主持人。
今天晚上好，主席。board of members。我们有一个持续的公开会议今晚的 zoning-related item 开放。我想向大家介绍我们上次讨论的事项。首先， 有一个 zoning ordinance amendment 具体到 8.8 GG 是一个赛车比赛。记得， 考虑停车的 residential property 的从500到200 feet。如我们所说， 我们在 September 时有了公开会议我们得到了在你上次会议上你提出了关于电车的 electric go-karts 的额外信息。所以会有额外的信息。你的 package 中有今晚的一个主要因素。我希望你有机会看看它。我们会将这部分作为这部分 presentation。再次声明， 这是你的 changes 在 text 中。仅500 feet 到200 feet 对于当前使用的 residential site。还有一个 planning board 加上的部分任何赛车比赛仅允许有 electric go-karts。那就是我们开始讨论那种车辆有多吵。为了给你一个概念， 这就是我们上次用的 schematic。关于某个 parcel 的影响。在这个情况下， 在两侧都是未开发的。对于西侧和西边的 sites 都是 residentially 发展的。所以这是现在停车的情况会影响那个 particular parcel。500 feet 从每个方向。在这个情况下， 与新提出的 regulations 会减少停车量到 200 feet。你可以看到更大的区域可以用于走路赛车赛道如果这个赛道被提议。这都是假设。回到你的 package 中新的信息。这是 manufacturer 的直接数据。它说明了你可能从这些 electric go-karts 中期待的 decimal readings。40到45 decimal levels 在50 feet 的距离。你可以看到这几乎相当于这会给您一个方向怎么从噪音水平中期待。从这里开始， 这个会议在 August 时在 planning board 上进行。然后有两个考虑的 motion。staff 也建议这个请求的批准。有 consistency statement。然后也改变 ordinance 和 ordinance book 自己。与这个同时，
今天晚上我开公开会议。妻子，我们有谁签名？
我们有一个负责人签了名。Scott Anderson。律师会读出不同的声明。
北县欢迎所有提供这个 proposed zoning text amendment 符合规则。我会保持所有 speakers 的时间为5 分钟。请写上你的名字和地址。
谢谢。今天晚上好，主席和 board of commissioners。我是 Scott Anderson。地址是 2755B Charles Boulevard。我很高兴今天在这里为这个请求发声。我希望回答一下你刚才提到的你曾经写了一封信我认为是在你的 package 中。是 manufacturer 的。我只读一下那部分。它说 electric go-karts 发出大约 40到45 decibels 在50 foot 距离。会发出超过 70+ decibels。如果汽车在 35 mph 或更多不计半卡车噪声。它还说 electric motors 不如汽油发动机不会发出声音。一个人在外面听到的声音产生于电动车是从车轮经过的声浪。那就是 40到45 decibels。再次声明， 主持人 showed 你图表。我现在说的是 60 decibels。为了给你一个比较那么安静。我想展示一个视频。它是从 Paradise Park 取景的。它在 Outer Banks。这是 electric go-karts 相当于我们提出的会使用。我认为在这个视频中当车靠近时你可以听到汽车的嗡嗡声或者车轮经过。当汽车移动时那个声音很快消失。如果我们可以播放这段视频。再次声明， 我说的车自己本身车轮非常安静。如果你听一下视频你可以听到车轮嗡嗡声比车轮更大声。因为这些原因我们就提出了这个请求觉得 500 feet 从200 feet 降低是合适的。我们保留了 500 feet 从已有的居民只是为了尊重我们不觉得如果我们改变了每个人那会是个坏事。但我们只是希望对于已有的居民重视。这就是为什么保持在 500 然后新的其余的 200。residential zones 的用途。不管是公园、athletics field 或者 amusement park。那些地方在 residential zone 中会适合并友好。所以这就是我们的逻辑。我们基于这个请求我很高兴回答你的问题。
有谁有异议或担忧？ 如果没有 further questions 那么我们关闭公开会议并不涉及 motions。
拟证。
我想发表声明。我感激他说 想想看， 这真的需要被 500 feet 从那些社区 驱停吗？ 从一个能够在那里进行 various activities 的角度。我觉得会是一个更大的赛道。更是一个 attraction。而且对社区来说没有伤害。所以既然如此， 我会提出我们降低到 200 feet 遍布。
作为替代 motion。所以有一个 motion 和一个 second 在 floor 上。认证申请请求并在你的 package 中。
好的，那么是替代 motion。
替代 motion 会是 200 feet 上面的所有的赛车。
因为它很安静。为什么？ 它会伤害任何人吗？
我们有 second？
我赞成。
如果 Commissioner Huggins 有意见。
在我们上次会议上我们讨论了这一切。我意思是， 以它最初呈现的方式。500 feet 附近。今天提出的请求。
我倾向于认为如果邻居他们知道它会被改为 200 feet 我们会处于不同的情况。但我认为我们已经通过了 500 feet 的 hearing。而且我觉得我们应该继续。
主持人，我认为是 200 feet。
记住， Commissioner Albright， 这不是一个特定的地点。还没有。yet, so the neighbors, no neighbors have been notified about this. This is just to change the standards exclusively.
Yeah, and since I made the motion, was it not at our last meeting that we asked for more information to come forward?
Yeah.
But we got it. We didn't have it then. It was not available to consider then. We not only have more information, but we just saw a video and heard it.
Commissioner Nunn.
So I actually, I agree in large part with Commissioner Coulson. However, this is a question for James and for County Manager. Just from a procedural standpoint, did this recommendation come through the planning board, the text change?
It did.
So I guess my only hesitation would be if we have a recommendation for the planning board that we agree with in principle, I would just be hesitant to jump over their recommendation at this point. But that would just be my only hesitation. I don't in principle disagree with Commissioner Coulson here, but what's before us is a recommendation by the planning board, so I'm inclined to go with that recommendation, just kind of to stay where I view my decision-making power in this circumstance. But I agree, I think it's a great presentation.
Well, in consideration that I made the motion, bear in mind, they didn't have this information either. So can we kick it back to them and let them reconsider it and maybe bring something else forward to us?
You could. It would just delay the process further for the applicant. Who is requesting the 200?
But the applicant, in my opinion, if this motion were to carry, would, they would be having the opportunity to develop a more attractive feature than what we would put on there if we put a 500-foot restriction.
But you would be giving them what they asked for.
A lot.
You'd be giving them what they asked for.
I think at a minimum, we should consider the original proposed motion, approve or disapprove, whichever the board is so inclined to do, and could always recommend that they come back with the additional proposal, but at least.
Is that gross? Janice?
Otherwise, we're going to continue to delay.
Janice and Jordan, being the lawyers that you are, is that a proper thing to do?
You could approve a text amendment today, and you could approve another text amendment at a later date unless the lawyer.
But would that not require the applicant to actually go and make a formal request?
It'd be another application before you, yes.
And the board can also initiate the resoning process. There doesn't have to be an applicant to do that. So I'm agreeing with Janice in saying there doesn't need to be an application from a member of the public. It can be directed by this board.
And Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, it is, I know your concern as the board was the noise of the engines, but there are other noises associated with this. One, for example, could be music, outdoor tract, there could be people cheering folks on, so it is not just the vehicles themselves. So I just lay that out for further consideration. And that's why, again, staff's recommendation for those residentially occupied sites, we still think the 500 is a more appropriate number, just for your consideration.
Commissioner Nunn.
First of all, I want to thank you, James, and your diligence in getting expert to come in to further explain this to us. I agree with Commissioner Nunn. I think that because we've had this expert and we heard this by video, I think now we should proceed with this and deal with any other matters as it comes. But right now, I think that we ought to move forward with this. Thank you.
Commissioner Nunn.
I just, I think that it would just be easy to not hold up the property, make, you know, the applicant in this case, just to approve it, and then with the recommendation that if we want to make it uniform, have the planning board look at it and kick it back to us, you know. But let's get this business going.
Mr. Chairman, a call for a vote.
At this time, we'll go ahead and vote on the substitute motion, reducing it to 200 feet.
All around.
All the way around.
Yes.
That's the substitute motion.
No. That's it. Two. Isn't it?
Motion does not pass. If we can now vote on the original motion as presented.
Is it reset?
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to items for report, Ms. Owen.
While she's coming forward, Mr. Chairman, I had requested Jenny Bowen, who is the Director of Rivers East Workforce Development, to come and make a brief presentation to this board about some of the things going on with Rivers East Workforce Development. Also want to recognize that Wayne Rollins are from Pitt County Economic Development is in the audience as well. Jenny.
Thank you, and thank you for having me tonight. Just a few brief things. I had met with Janice earlier, as well as some of the other counties, and just wanted to share some things we had going on, some county-specific numbers for Pitt. As you may know, the Rivers East Workforce Development Board is under the, is the administrative entity of Mideast Commission, so we cover the same five counties as Mideast, which is both Fertie, Hurtford, Martin, and of course, Pitt. We are a private sector-led board by federal law under, we have 19 members. The appointees from Pitt County is our chairman, who is Robert Williams, a new appointee who is actually later on your agenda for tonight. Also serving are Trey Goodson with NC East Alliance, Larry Donley, which serves with Commerce and Division of Workforce Solutions, Lynn Hodges, which is Vocational Rehabilitation, and Dr. Gould from Pitt Community College. We also partner closely, obviously, with Economic Development, K-12 schools, Community College, ECU, your Department of Social Services, and other community-based organizations. Our flagship product is our NC Works Career Centers. Our NC Works Career Center here in Greenville was actually just recently recertified by the state for a three-year period. It's a Tier One center, which is the top level that can be obtained. We're open Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 5:00. We also offer virtual services, so services by text, and we hope to launch a full virtual services center by the end of the year when we can finalize some staffing. Just to give you a little bit of information about what happened in Pitt County last year, for our year from July 1st to June 30th, we served 8,536 Pitt County residents or individuals through our Pitt County NC Works Career Center. We also had employers posted 6,406 jobs. So there are applicants out there looking for work, and there are employers looking to match with those applicants, and that is our job at the NC Works Career Center. So we help with job referrals, career exploration, career planning, resumes, interviews, all those things to help make that match. We also assisted 270 adults and dislocated workers and 201 youth with either paid classroom training, supportive services, on-the-job training, paid work experience, and internships. We also, as part of our expansion, are looking to expand some service locations. We're seeing, like many entities, that since COVID and the reopening, customers aren't coming to us as much, so we're looking to get out to them. So this month, you'll start seeing NC Works services offered at various locations in Bethel, Farmville, and Griffon, and we're also looking at potentially another site that's not been yet confirmed. Some special projects, we've been doing job fairs. We've done virtual and in-person with ECU Health, which is obviously one of the region's largest employers, Victra, which is here in Pitt County over in Winterville, and we also do in-person job fairs almost every week in our career center. I encourage you or anyone that you know of that's looking for work to follow the Pitt County NC Works Career Center on Facebook. We post events every week for people coming in that are either looking for jobs or employers who are coming in, and a lot of them are hiring on the spot. We also participated last week in the Better Skills, Better Jobs Job Fair. We also, earlier this month, kicked off the Rivers East Academy. This is from a Golden Leaf grant, and the whole purpose of this is to better understand advanced manufacturing. So it's to help our students, our teachers, and our parents. Those who are influencing those students on what decisions they're making about careers is to help them better understand what advanced manufacturing looks like in the new economy. We had six counties represented. They had teachers from different high schools there, and we also did a live-stream shop talk, which included employers like Grady White Boats, Jack Ferrier, Gregory Poole, Fuji Salicia, and a few others. And also as part of that, we're launching a program called Made in Pitt County. And when I met with Janice, I was hoping to have those materials, but delays at the printer kept that from happening, so I'll be sure to get that to you. What that does is actually provide a roadmap for a student that talks about all the different jobs in manufacturing, from the person who's doing the administrative work on the front end to the person who's doing the production planning, the management, the engineers, the person on the floor doing the production, running the machine, doing the assembly, who's packing it, and the logistics people who are getting it out the door in the truck. And so we've broken that down into four areas, and we're really excited about that and being able to highlight local manufacturers. We are doing that for each of our counties so that students, again, can see what goes on in each plant. We'll also be doing videos inside plant sites, and so all of those materials will be available to our teachers to put back into the classroom, as well as using Skills USA to provide contextualized learning. So actual projects, they build while they're with us so that they can actually take back to the classroom to relate back to those employers. We also have two upcoming events I just wanted to make you aware of. One of those is this Friday. We are partnering with Pitt County Economic Development and Heister Yale for the Fortlift Rodeo. You can actually come, people, come watch people do all kinds of things with forklifts. We have six companies who have registered three-man teams. I understand they'll pick up a basketball and put it in a hoop with a forklift. They do all these things. They're judged, they get awards, so we're really excited about that. That's this Friday from 8:30 to 12:30 at Five Points Plaza downtown. And also, I wanted to let you know that the board is responsible for rapid response. So when you hear a company in your area is closing, we get that phone call, and we actually work with those employees through that transition. So we will start next week working with the employees of Denso, the 475 folks that are being displaced for that closure. We will be doing rapid response sessions two full days with them so that we can cycle through all the employees, and then hopefully later this year, at the company's discretion, us along with Economic Development will actually be hosting a job fair just for those employees. And we already have employers lined up, ready to take them. So any questions?
Commissioner Perkins, please.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. I'd like to know, out of the statistics that you gave, how many of those are from Pitt County?
The individuals and the jobs that I shared are Pitt County-specific numbers. The other, the adult dislocated and youth numbers that I shared were reason-wide. I didn't bring the county-specific numbers. I will tell you that we do serve the majority of our participants from Pitt, being our largest county. Also, we allocate additional staffing in Pitt County as well.
I just wanted to know about the Pitt County ones.
And I can certainly get those back to you.
How many from Pitt County out of the region?
Sure, I'd be glad to get those back to you.
If I can share as well, Jenny and I have been communicating frequently, and I now have access to the board packages for the Rivers East Board, all of the financials on a regular basis, and a direct line for questions as I watch the flow of money through Pitt County and the impact on, help me, adult dislocated workers, youth, and there's a third one.
It's adult dislocated worker and youth. Those are the three main parts.
Yes. So we've been working real closely together, and so any other additional questions, feel free to ask, and what I don't know the answer, I can call Jenny.
Yes, and we will actually, and we'll actually, this year, our board has actually asked us to update those numbers monthly versus every, we've been doing a meeting every two months, and so we're providing those monthly, and so Janice will get a copy of those.
Thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Floyd.
Thank you for allowing me to visit a few moments with you and just give you an update on the happenings and the status of our health system here in eastern North Carolina. See if I can get this to work. All right. So for more than 40 years, we've been pursuing a mission here in eastern North Carolina, and we have stated our claim to become a national model for rural healthcare delivery in the United States. Since then, we've been evolving as a healthcare system, as a hospital, as a medical school, a partner to other colleges. But obviously, in the past year, most of you know that we've brought our health system and our medical school together, creating a new organization known as ECU Health. And so that's an exciting time for eastern North Carolina, a really important endeavor for the future of something that is a bedrock to our community in so many respects. So we've rebranded the system. We're in the process of rebranding our system to become ECU Health. All the organizational structures formerly known as Viden Health will now be known as ECU Health Infrastructure, whether they are hospitals, clinics, or any part of the former-named Viden Health. We continue to invest in making sure we can provide the best quality of care to eastern North Carolina. I'd like to take a moment and remind you what the system is that we call ECU Health. It's quite a few parts. We have nine hospitals. One of those is among the nation's largest, 15 hospitals. It's 1,100-bed Level One Trauma Center, the most comprehensive medical center, East of I-95, and one of the most comprehensive in the state of North Carolina with some of the highest volume care. We also have other hospitals in our community that span around eastern North Carolina. We have clinics. There are more than 100 clinics where we have physicians providing healthcare as ECU Health in eastern North Carolina. We have about, in a given year, we'll do about 50,000 surgeries as an organization. We'll deliver 6,000 to 7,000 babies as an organization. We'll render care to more than 180,000 emergency department visits. It's a very, very busy, comprehensive health system. We will take care of about 440,000 patients a year here in eastern North Carolina as ECU Health. The care is not the only part. We also are an academic health system, and as such, one of our, the bedrock of the organization is the Brody School of Medicine. I want to remind you that the Brody School of Medicine in and of itself is a very successful mission placed here in eastern North Carolina. If you remember, its purpose is about providing primary care physicians, family physicians to a rural part of our state, and they're a very successful, top-10 program for family medicine. They rank in 13, top 13 for diverse medical schools. And so we see the tremendous success that comes from having a medical school that ranks very high nationally for what it was built to do here in eastern North Carolina. And we wouldn't see the improvements in health status across this region were it not for the Brody School of Medicine. We wouldn't have the Level One Trauma Center that so many people around the region rely on, and subsequently, all that you see as ECU Health today were it not for the fact that we are affiliated with a university system that provides those physicians. The rebranding is underway, but it means that we share one name, one purpose, one goal, one set of infrastructure in eastern North Carolina. There are still parts and pieces to the health system that are independent from each other, different companies, let's say. But we are becoming one in both the bottom-line impact that we have, one in organizational design, and eventually, one in a fully clinically-integrated health system where the record follows the patient in any one of those locations, where the physicians see all the information in all of those locations, and there's one team serving eastern North Carolina. And you'll see more about that over the coming year as we continue the rebranding process. But the process of branding is one nice thing, and we love purple and gold, and we're very excited about that, but it's much, much more than that. And I'm here tonight to just give you some activity levels and talk about what's going on, particularly here in Pitt County with the health system and the medical center here. Here you see some of the statistics of the activities for the fiscal year '22 that we are ending. You'll see both some red ink on this sheet and you'll see some green ink. There's been movement of patients from categories. We don't see as many surgical procedures in the inpatient environment. We've moved many of those to the outpatient environment. That's a good thing for patients, a part of our goal and intention for the mission, not a negative thing. You'll notice the days, patient days, being pretty high. That is something that is the byproduct of our patients staying in the hospitals longer because we are, in fact, seeing in the post-pandemic era, something that all hospitals are experiencing, patients who are sicker now than they were before. Many people put off healthcare for these few years. Now we see exacerbation of illness, people who have forgone certain procedures and things that they need. They come into the hospital a little sicker. They come into the hospital a little sicker than they would have been probably before with the same diagnosis. That means they stay with us longer. The complications of our time, the complications of getting resources to patients, all those things play a role in patients being in the hospital longer, and that has an impact on how much bed capacity we have here in Greenville. Keep in mind, of all of our hospitals and non-ECU Health hospitals around eastern North Carolina, this is the tertiary center where most all patients come for higher level of care. I've given this statistic in the past, it's pertinent to this, about, this is usually within the top five inter-facility transfer hospitals in the nation. That means when you look at all hospitals, what was Pitt County Memorial Hospital, now ECU Health Medical Center, has patients come from other hospitals to this hospital as much or more than all but four other hospitals in the country. So it's a very big part of healthcare, but it is a very, very busy, and part of that has to do with the population that we serve. We all know we serve a region that's underserved with a lot of socioeconomic conditions that make it challenging to keep people well and keep people healthy, and not enough infrastructure in the east to provide an alternative sometimes to emergency visits or hospital visits. And people put that off and get into the hospitals and often get transferred here. So you see very high volumes here at our medical center. The average length of stay, I mentioned earlier, up higher than our prior years, up higher than our plan, meaning that our hospitals tends to be busier every day. There are more beds in operation here in Greenville today than there have been in the last two years. Still, you see the waiting times and you see the congestion of our medical center because we have such a high volume of sicker patients now coming into this environment, a high volume of emergency visits that are coming into the environment, sometimes for primary care reasons and sometimes for true emergency conditions, but we see them all. And so it is a very, very busy environment. When I talk about that emergency department visits, used to about night prior to the pandemic, you'd see this blue line here representing the volume of care that we rendered prior to the pandemic, and then you can see how it changed in fiscal year 2020 at the outset of the pandemic. A huge drop-off of patients that were coming to the emergency room that suddenly didn't come anymore. Most of that was well-patient visits or primary care kind of visits that weren't true emergencies, so they could put it off and didn't show up. It does show you how much of the care we're rendering in our emergency departments is in the category of probably primary care kind of patient types who come to the hospital knowing that they won't be turned away. So the pandemic unfolds, and over the coming years, you can see this increasing now number of emergency visits going back into the hospital's environment, but you'll notice that the high percentage, 22% of the patients that we see in our emergency department now, end up needing an inpatient bed versus the 15%, 14%, and 16% we've seen in the past. Most people want to know how COVID is going and what kind of patient population we're seeing here. This is the number of our inpatient census at the medical center. This is divided up into the total census in the blue line, and then underneath that, those that are in ICU. So these numbers look much better than I have shown you in the past, these peaks, as you can see, but there's still patients in the hospital with COVID. COVID is still around and still something that sometimes requires patients to be hospitalized, but much better than we have seen in the past. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that despite the pandemic, despite the busyness of our time and the unique challenges we're facing, there's an incredible team delivering care to eastern North Carolina here at ECU Health. More than 14,000 people dedicated to making sure that you and I get the healthcare we need when we need it. You can hardly sit in Pitt County and not hear a helicopter every so often flying overhead. Every time you hear it, there's a team going to someone in tremendous need to bring them to a place where we can try to rescue their care need. And it's constant, and it's a busy part of eastern North Carolina. We have a great team. We continue to build that team. But the realities are, we are facing a significant change in the workforce in healthcare in general. Nursing shortage is something you hear a lot about. Nursing shortages drive some of our capacity limitations in our healthcare systems. This map shows for the projections of 2033, future problems we are trying to begin to deal with today. One problem of the pandemic is that a lot of nurses exited the healthcare arenas, particularly in hospital, due to the pandemic and due to the care that they were having to render in COVID times, across the nation, not just here. And what that means is a lot of pressure in that pipeline. When you look at the east region, you'll notice significant difference in the availability of nurses, and we have a thinly populated, so rates are going to look higher. But nursing shortages in our state are profound and one of the higher states in the country. People ask about turnover of nurses. This shows you at our hospital here what the turnover of bedside nurses has looked like through our pandemic, from 2019 at 15%. If you look before that, it was closer to 13% and 14% up to 21% in 2021. The number this year is closer to 23%. The national average is 25%. So while we may be better than the national average at the retention of nurses, all hospitals are suffering from the loss of nurses at a tremendous rate. Here's what we look like over time in developing the number of nurses that we need to take care of patients. Now, keep in mind, as patient volumes increase, the need for nurses increases. It's not a static thing. So even if we have five today, we hire five to more, the need could be 15 the very next day. And so we're always trying to catch up to the demand with the turnover norms. And so we, our nursing workforce is comprised of several categories. The core staff, we call them, the people who are signed up from eastern North Carolina or live here, work here every day as full-time nurses in our organization, we're grateful for them. There are less of those in that category than there have been in the past. There are more in externally contracted nurses. You'll see that blue line that grew and now is shrinking a little bit, and I'll tell you why that is the case. Above that are international nurses. We opened up the pipeline internationally to bring nurses into eastern North Carolina and have successfully onboarded quite a few nurses from other countries who are now part of our team. And then there's a small sliver of this that is the overtime or added hours that nurses work in addition to a full-time equivalent to help make sure patients get the care they need. And let me pause there a moment and remind you of something. So in our neonatal ICU as an example, just one ICU in this giant medical complex, 50 beds, 50 bassinets for newborn babies that are neonates, they're not supposed to be born yet, they're early. Some of those are 23 to 24 weeks in gestation, and so they'll be with us for weeks. That unit can have the loss of 10% of staff, retirement or loss from COVID. Those are highly specialized nurses, and yet what they do, when that baby shows up in the bassinet anyway, do you think the nurses don't come in? Of course they do. Physicians do. There's a baby that needs care, someone's coming in on their day off, we're going to take care of this baby, and they're highly committed to that, and they achieve incredible results, like an entire year with no infections among 50 neonates who are immunocompromised every day. Incredible team there at our medical center, but it's challenging in the times that we are living in. The travel nurse numbers, I told you, that are going up, it's a national pandemic. This curve here that represents the national numbers of travel nurse jobs, and you can see how significant this growth curve has been. So what's really happened here from early times of 5,000 up to 47,000 jobs being created, this is national new market that's been created due to the pandemic. Because all hospitals desperate for nurses are willing to pay the contracted rates, more companies open up as contracted companies. As the rates go up and pay goes up, more nurses join those companies so that they can travel and earn more money per hour. Those rates have been as high as $220 an hour. Hospitals are paying, we've been paying, more than $15 to $20 million a month for travel nurses to fill that small segment I showed you in our workforce need, and that's common across hospitals in the nation. Ours was coming down a bit, in part because we opened up our own travel company, and by doing so, we were able to achieve some price control by having local nurses join our travel company from other parts who maybe were part of the organization, moved away, have come back, but we've seen great success in that. But that curve is coming down, as demand is coming down nationally, but it's still a very big part of the financial picture of any hospital. Here I'm showing you our operating margins over time. This looks at 2018, before the pandemic. You can see in 2020, a negative operating margin of 1.7%. That is the result, if you remember, we stopped surgeries, we reduced the admissions to the hospital, we saw less patients coming into the hospital, we did not lay off a bunch of staff, we kept our team, not knowing at what point the COVID pandemic may fill our hospitals, and we invested heavily in our ability to take care of eastern North Carolina with lab testing, supplies, and all those things, and made sure our staff were available. So we had a very difficult financial year, of course, in the early stages. In 2021, you see a positive margin of 1.8. Remember, most of that is the buffer of the CARES Act that allowed us to have subsidies to overcome the losses we were having taking care of those patients. CARES Act funding aside, now we're in 2022, and you see a negative 2.6 operating margin. These losses, when we had planned for 2.1% positive margin, by the way, so that's a big, big marginal difference. Looking at revenue and expense, obviously that's what creates the operating margin. You can see in the orange line here, our total expense number, and you can see from 2019 how it steadily increased. It dropped down for a period of time, that was when we were in the lull, and so patient care hours dropped off, so expenses dropped off. Then they picked back up, both supply escalation, medication escalation in price, supply chain escalations, as other companies have been experiencing, and then largely, the cost of labor that has continued to go up so much. You can see that our expenses simply outstrip the revenue, even though there is revenue growth in our care cycle that has returned to above the levels it was prior to the pandemic. In other words, we're taking care of patients, we're taking care of a lot of patients, we're doing surgeries and the procedures we did before, we're delivering lots of babies, we're rendering care to a lot of people, but it's costing us a tremendous amount to do it with the shortages of labor and some of the supply issues that I mentioned. We are not alone, I've said that a couple of times, that doesn't take us off the hook or make the problem go away, but it's important to understand in context that you can't not read healthcare news today and hear the stories of really significant losses, $2 billion losses in organizations around the country, those that have prominent histories like Cleveland Clinic posting giant $787 million losses. So it's a significant issue. I serve on our Healthcare Association's board, and I, we talk with other parties around the state, and all hospitals in North Carolina are feeling the strain that I'm describing for you here today, and some more than others. We are certainly not immune to that. On the national level, this Kaufman-Hall report looks at operating margins across hospitals nationally, and you can see the blue line without the CARES Act funding, the other line with the CARES Act funding, and then you can see as that funding goes away in '22, where we drop off here, and you can see the negative margins that are pretty much the same all across the nation in hospitals for the same reasons that I've just indexed. This is on track to be the worst financial year in the history of healthcare in our country for the reasons that I've just stated. So the number of hospitals you see here in the green bars posting negative operating margins are going to increase to pre-pandemic levels, and you see the numbers of 53% or more posting significant healthcare losses. When I look at us, and we talk about the financial issue here, we obviously have to weather these times to make sure we render the care to the public, and it is a challenge, and healthcare is very expensive. It is important for governing boards to remember that healthcare is both a cost to an insurer or a patient, and healthcare is a significant part of the gross domestic product of our state, and certainly a significant part of the GDP in eastern North Carolina. 14,000 jobs constitute a significant wage plan of more than $1.5 billion that goes into our communities through wages earned by our teams. And of course, we have foundation in fundraising and in-kind gifts that constitute nearly $15 billion, $1 million. But our economic impact, which we study with ECU every year, still is around $4 billion to eastern North Carolina that the health system provides through doing its work in the east. So it is both a cost, it's certainly a healthcare benefit, and when you need it, you need it, and you're glad that that's there. It is also a significant part of our economy in the east. COVID's changed a lot of things, labor pools, how we work, how we deliver care, significantly different. The economic outlooks look very different. I will say that as an organization, we just recently had our bond rating updated, double A, with a stable outlook despite the issues that I've said. Now, that doesn't sound like that makes sense, but if everybody else's outlook is challenging and yours is a little less challenging than some, you still have a stable financial outlook for reasons of our market penetration in the east, the stability of our programs, the fact that we have nursing schools, pharmacy school relationships, medical schools, and all these things to create an answer to our own workforce issues gives us an advantage that's recognized in the market. But here's some statistics. A third of the nurses plan to leave their current roles by the end of 2022 in our nation. So these workforce challenges are significant. There's an estimation that between 37,000 and 124,000 physicians will have left the workforce by 2034, including both shortfalls in primary care and the many specialty care areas, that these hospital labor expenses has increased more than a third from pre-pandemic levels to where we are today. More than a third on organizations like ours that are more than a billion-dollar organization, it's a significant increase in costs. Of course, as we all know, rural healthcare feels these challenges first and usually feels them the most profoundly. We're not immune to that. Rural hospital closures around the country have been a thing now for quite a few years, more than a decade, but there have been closures in eastern North Carolina and closures in North Carolina as well as people try to overcome the significant challenges that we're talking about. So you might say, well, that sounds very challenging, what can we do? There are two things in play right now that are important that you understand that can help not only your healthcare system, but healthcare systems around the state. We are all unanimously, as a healthcare body in our state, in favor of Medicaid and have been pushing Medicaid expansion for some time to bring insurance possibility to nearly 500,000 residents in our state. There's also a part of healthcare expansion called HASP, Hospital Access Stabilization Program. It's a federal program that provides relief and subsidies into the state that can be disseminated to healthcare systems on the basis of their Medicaid numbers. That's dollars that are federal dollars that can come into the state. Medicaid expansion itself is federal dollars because the hospital systems have all agreed to pay the state's portion for expansion, so it doesn't cost the state anything, it just brings federal dollars to help support us. Along with that, there are these Hospital Access Stabilization Plan that's worth $1.7 to North Carolina from the federal government. You've probably seen some of the literature about this, op-ed pieces and discussions about that. The reality is that we support Medicaid expansion fully and have been for more than seven years. The stabilization program is made available to us, and the hospitals don't pass laws and don't pass legislation to make these things happen. We certainly advocate and need these resources tremendously. The public helps create policy, the public helps create the process by which these dollars can be brought in, and we want your voices heard in the General Assembly to help us get these things done. More recently, things like a certificate of need law come up, and they have been linked to these issues. Certificate of Need Law has nothing to do with these programs, but some would like to see certificate of need laws changed. At ECU Health, we support the retention of the certificate of need law, not to limit excess, but because we are highly invested in an under-resourced environment, an under-insured environment, that changing the law and pulling out parts and pieces of the care of insured patients leaves behind high-cost structures with no way to overcome that and forces the healthcare systems to reduce their footprint to overcome those losses. That's not good for eastern North Carolina. It may save money in insurance programs, but it will not help the healthcare systems, physicians, and long-term citizens who don't have access to the care that they need as systems retrench to a new norm. And if we've agreed to help pay the state's portion of Medicaid expansion, we can't risk losing our footing to do that by changing a law that stabilizes our income levels. I hope that makes sense to you. So the battle of undoing this, we've agreed as a healthcare field to make some modifications to the certificate of need law, because even if you take that, the HASP payments and Medicaid expansion, the net benefit is still $1.7 billion to your hospitals in North Carolina. And this is a time that it's significant, and I hope what you hear from me is not an alarmist mentality. We will make the adjustments necessary to do what we need to do to thrive here in eastern North Carolina. We can't do it and be all that we have been, perhaps. We will have to make the adjustments necessary to do that. have to make the adjustments necessary to do that. But these laws, these potential funding sources from the government do make it possible to overcome the negative balance sheets that we're having today to continue to operate our systems, and they were made available, by the way, for organizations just like ECU Health that operate in poorer, rural, large geography communities where these resources can't just be filled at the backs of insurance patients and that sort of thing. So, we're asking for your advocacy when the time comes, and you're asked about it, that Medicaid expansion and HASP is vital to Eastern North Carolina. And let me close by just saying thank you. The, from the time three years ago to today, we've been in this room together, and we've all been learning together how to adapt in the environment that we have to keep people safe, do the best we can for the most people here in Eastern North Carolina. And I appreciate your patience as we have all learned and weathered what this challenging time has meant to the East, certainly to our organizations. Thank you for trusting us with your healthcare. Thank you for trusting us with your lives and that of your families, and thank you for caring for the people who care for Eastern North Carolina at ECU Health. Thank you. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Plouffe.
Ms. Nichols.
Good evening, everyone. Bringing some good news tonight. The Pitt County Reserve Office is pleased to announce that effective November 1st, we will become a passport agency with the ability to assist citizens obtain their passports or renew their passports. This is something we have tried to accomplish over the past several years, but due to office space, we were unable to. We will be providing this service to our citizens without having to add additional staff. We are very excited to begin this adventure, and we will be sending out more information in the near future. Another note, the Reserve Office will begin its move to its new location at 100 East First Street on Monday, October 17. The office will be closed on Thursday, October 20th, to the public in order to relocate all the computer systems and phones. Services will resume on Friday, October 21st, at 8:00 a.m. So, please feel free to contact me if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Prue.
Madam, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Ms. Nichols for the vision in making this happen. That's something that this community really needs, and I appreciate your vision in this. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and Madam Manager. Tonight, I bring you the August 2022 financial report for the general solid waste and EMS funds, being two months into the fiscal year at this point, or 16.67% of the year. For the general fund, we have collected 33.64% of anticipated revenues and spent 16.77% of budgeted expenditures. Solid waste, we have collected 48.06% and spent 14.62%. Solid waste, excuse me, EMS, we have collected 33.45% and spent 21.59%. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for the board to approve the report as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. If everyone could vote. Motion passes unanimously. We can now move on to the manager's report.
Yes, I have just three short items for you this evening. Your next meeting date's October 17th and November 7th at 6:00 p.m. in this room. Also, the second item to let you know, at your last meeting, we discussed an opioid public meeting for municipalities, and you gave the authority for staff to proceed with that. That meeting has been set for October 25th, 2002, at 3:00 p.m. in the Mark W. Owens Jr. Auditorium at the Ag Center. That is not an official board meeting. That board members must be present, but it will be an opportunity for municipalities or their representatives and members of the public to share their thoughts on expenditure of opioid funding. And lastly, just an update to the board. In our Human Relations Commission, we have hired a community relations coordinator part-time. Her name is Jessica Williams. She started two weeks ago, and she will be before this board in October to follow up on the board's directives that related to amendments to your ordinance and bylaws, and talk about further appointments to that board. That's all that I have.
This time entertaining motion for items for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. If everyone could vote. Motion passes. Moving on now to items for discussion. Environmental protection. Commissioner Huggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, I, during Commissioner's comment, I raised a question about environmental issues or environmental protection. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out this, this evening. And I, I was invited to a Zoom meeting, well, several, from NOTRA, and this is how it was brought to my attention that, about environmental issues, that we could, we need to do something when we are recruiting industry to, to come to Pitt County. So, that, that brought, brought it, I'll say, front and center for me listening to the, the people north of the river at that time on, on the Zoom meetings. So, I said, well, when, when we have our Economic Development Director, I believe that's her title, coming for us with information about recruiting industries, then I think we, we, we should be looking at the environmental issues within that company, if they are looking at their background or their track record, and we should put something in place that says that Pitt County want to provide a quality, quality living, improve and enhance. In fact, in our mission, we, we speak to the part about enhancing the quality of life of our citizens of, of Pitt County, safety and well-being. So, and then if you look at our priorities, a couple of bullet points to promote community safety through enhanced emergency service programs, and to enrich the quality of life of Pitt County citizens through opportunities for improved health, welfare, and environmental concerns. These are some of our priorities. I am a member of the Pitt Partners for Health, and along with that group, Public Health and VADA, we, we take, they take an assessment of, of, of health here in Pitt County. So, when one of the speakers talked about the health factors and, and outcomes, I have heard those, those stats from them. So, I want to ask this board commissioners to look at when we are recruiting industries to come to Pitt County, that we put in place some kind of policy or whatever that they, that when Kelly talked to that industry, that they will know what Pitt County stands for as, as far as environmental issues. So, we will not get to the end of, of the recruiting, get to the end of it, and, and we have residents who have investigated these companies and bring to our attention that there is an environmental issue or concern. So, I would hope that we would be on the front end of it in, in doing this. So, this is what I'm saying to this board. I think we can recruit industry and bring jobs to Pitt County. It should be a and process. It should not be or. So, we can bring great jobs with living income and also have a quality of life for our citizens here in Pitt County. So, that, this is my concern, and I think we had citizens tonight that said it to us. So, I think we should look at what we can do to, you know, to really make sure that we bring industry to Pitt County that will not harm our quality of life.
Question, remember.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Huggins. So, this is a question for Manager Gallagher. As a part of our internal review process and, and with staff, is it possible that we, and, and this has happened in the past with, with recent applications, but once we get those applicants in, and we, and we take those under review, would there already be any problem asking staff to please include in their report to our board any environmental concerns that, that would be, I guess, on point to the, the discussion that Commissioner Huggins and, and the residents have, have raised this evening?
Yeah, nothing would prevent that. And in fact, since this was brought up at the last meeting, I did meet with Kelly Andrews, Pitt County Economic Development Director, and we have always, on the economic development side, considered environmental impacts before projects were brought to this board for consideration. What we've changed after this is that it will now be explicit. So, typically, whenever you hear about a project or when we do a public hearing, our notices include always the number of jobs, the average wage, and the investment of that company. We can now add to that in any presentation to the board, the environmental impacts explicitly, so that you will know the research that went into in advance for every project, and you'll have that information in front of you when you consider whether or not, or how you want to interact with this particular business. So, we haven't had one since the last meeting, but that's an internal change that I've already put into place that will be more explicit and apparent to the Board of Commissioners and to the public as we consider projects in the future.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, question?
Because then give us an opportunity to ask some questions or whatever when it's brought up.
Yes.
Great.
Well, believe it or not, I've been following the environmental issues since the mid 1980s. I don't claim to be an expert, but I think I'm well-read on it, and I would dare say that some members of this board would disagree me, with me on certain things. For instance, earlier, it was brought up about models that scientists have created. I would like to remind you that not one model, not one, has ever proven to be accurate. There, and now, would I say that that is necessarily a bad thing? No, I think that what that means is we just hadn't honed in on where, where we are and what we really need to do about it. So, what, and your recommending, I'm troubled from the standpoint of what boundaries or restrictions are put on this, because it's pretty nebulous to say, I want, you know, a healthy community and good air and so on. Who doesn't? Who? I mean, I keep hearing arguments about Republicans. I'm one of them. Republicans don't want clean air, really. I want my wife and my children to breathe bad air. We don't want clean water, really. I want my children to be poisoned. No, nobody believes that, and that's sensational argument, arguments that are made to drive fear and panic. So, from a level head, do we need to put some kind of policy together that would be saying, well, what is it that we're actually saying when we say those words? We want a healthy community and healthy companies come in here? The other thing, too, is would it be by state law, it, would they, if we wanted to restrict a company, can we legally do that? And can we legally do it in all instances or just some? And so, I don't know. I'm not sure what all this is about, without putting some kind of document together that makes a restriction, that, that specifies what the restrictions are that make a company unhealthy for consideration.
So, I suppose just in response, Mr. Chairman, I'm not so sure the conversation is, is about restricting or our ability to restrict a company from locating here. I think it has to do with who we attract and who we might incentivize to come to us, and who we're actually actively recruiting to come. And, and I think it's about doing due diligence to be sure that those in our community, that if we're aware of issues, that we're referring them to the appropriate regulatory agency, as we have done in the past, when we're aware of issues that have arisen. So, I think the answer is no, we don't have the authority to go in and restrict and say, stop, you can't. But we can control the behavior that's within our purview, which is incentivizing, attracting, recruiting, and bringing folks that might have negative impacts, and making the decision-makers fully aware and the public fully aware at the time those are being considered.
So, are we going to vote on this? Is this a little raised to a point of vote or just discussion?
I think it's just for discussion purposes.
I want to say I can agree with that, but I, it's kind of broad, and it, and that's a monster that could develop over years. So...
Commissioner McGlaughlin.
First of all, I want to, I want to thank you, Janice, for meeting with Kelly. I, I think this concern, Commissioner Huggins, is very well-taken. You know, we, we continue to talk about Pitt County being the leader in, in, in the state, especially in the East. You know, I think that we should present ourselves at least showing that we are environmentally friendly, and, and, and when we come to standards of the environment, I think that we ought to show that we are at least meeting the standards of, of any industry that comes into Pitt County being environmentally stable, if not exceeding those standards, to, to show forth that we are concerned about the issues and comments that was made earlier tonight, that these were real, real concerns and, and, and doing real time. So, I think that, I think that we should take initiative to show ourselves in balancing that and, and make sure that we are attracting industry that, that know that we are, we're, we're stable, and we're believing that these industry will come into Pitt County, meeting those kind of standards. And I think Kelly and, Kelly and you working with Janice would do that. And I'm, I'm appreciative of the move that we've already made.
Commissioner Nunn.
Oh, no, well, I think I was just going to stay, say after Commissioner McGlaughlin's last comment, that I think that the initiative that staff has taken on this front, you know, puts, puts every application in front of the board so that we can, so we can see what's in front of us. And I think that's important, that's the important piece, so that decision-makers can make informed decisions.
Mr. Rush.
When we're talking about this, and we're, I understood that it's primarily incentive, but can you remind me with Compute North, that was not incentive so much as it was a... a zoning change?
Exactly.
That's right.
Similar to what you did tonight.
Right. So how does staff then incorporate this same kind of concern when an industry comes in and requests not an incentive but a change in our law or our zoning so that they can operate a business? And they're saying they don't need our incentive, but they do need, in some ways, they need a break and a change in our regulations. So I'm just throwing that out, but it seems like the particular one that was brought to our attention was more a zoning question than an incentive question. So that's something for maybe staff to think about. It also struck me as something that we didn't need to vote on tonight, that I do appreciate your looking into this and you're bringing this to our attention and the citizen.
And I think this board has demonstrated its leadership in what you observed this evening with the text amendment on the go-carts, because this board has set expectations that you want to hear about the impact of noise, which is an environmental concern. And you had before you this evening not only the scientific data about the decibels, the video, and further discussion. And so leading staff to provide that information organically each time you have a text amendment, because tonight's was that, I think will make a difference and also add to, I think the key here is transparency and accountability. And I think that kind of information, we are demonstrating to you staff's commitment to present what's necessary for you to make the best-informed decision.
I'd like to ask one question. I really, there was a reference made to World Cat. Do we have that authority?
Do we have what authority?
That authority to address the cities.
Not directly, no.
No. I just wanted to make sure, you know.
I want to speak more on it. Tom, I don't believe this is a partisan issue and not that, that was not, I'm not saying, you know, that Republicans don't want clean air and water and all of that. That's not what I'm saying. But I do think that, is it enough that staff, what do we need to do to, that staff and will know that we want environmental, that we are environmentally friendly county?
I think this is sufficient direction for staff.
Don't we have an environmental person and all that? Don't we have someone?
We have an environmental division of public health that relates to restaurants and septic inspections. It's a little bit different, I think, than this conversation, but a component for sure.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it doesn't apply to industry and zoning changes and all of that.
No. But as your manager, hearing this conversation tonight, I will absolutely share it with the entire senior leadership team and department heads at our next monthly meeting, and it will be sufficiently communicated throughout the organization.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, move on to items for decision. Mr. Demmer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Out of the transfer station, we operate a wastewater pump station. That station was put in when the transfer station was built in 1996, and it is in need of major repairs. Staff is requesting the East Group to provide some design services for us and create construction documents for bidding. The cost of the engineering service is $8,500. The tax is a resolution to exempt the county from the provisions of the Mini Brooks Act. So I'm asking if you would approve the resolution and allow the county manager to execute the contract for the East Group, and then further, once we get the design and bid it, we'll be back for you with that contract as well.
At this time, it entertains itself.
Motion to allow the.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second.
John, you just got to quit running the equipment into the ground and wearing it out.
Motion passes.
Try not to run it into the ground.
Thank you. Madam Manager, if we could move on to Juvenile Crime Prevention Council?
Yes, it has been recommended that this board appoint Mr. Christopher Williams as the at-large representative on the juvenile crime prevention council.
That's a move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Manager, you're up again.
On the, for the Pitt County Planning Board, it is being recommended that Naomi Buck for District A and Thompson Forbes District Six be reappointed to the planning board.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and properly second. Motion passes. Moving on to the EMS Oversight Committee.
It is being recommended that Charles Mayo Jr. be reappointed to the EMS Oversight Committee with the term expiring June 13th, 2025. And as a note, this will be an exception to your policy because he has exceeded the maximum amount of terms, but has been an excellent board member and is being recommended by the committee nonetheless.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it then.
It's been moved and properly second. Motion passes. And moving on to Rivers East Workforce Development Board, Madam Manager.
Yes, it's being recommended that Ms. Wanda Williams be the private industry representative on the Rivers East Workforce Development Board. She is currently associated with Fuji Solicia in the community and is being recommended by both the board and Pitt County Economic Development. She would serve a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Motion passes, and finally, the appointment to the ABC Board.
Yes, the ABC Board is recommending that William or Bill Johnson replace Commissioner Tom Colson on that board, who is no longer seeking appointment. If he fills that spot, he would fill a term set to expire September 9th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Manager, I would like to offer another candidate.
I believe we have.
Yes, so we can do nominations. We can consider Bill Johnson as one nomination, and you can accept other nominations for the appointment.
Nominate Billy Moy.
And are there any other?
No second. That motion fails.
I'll second, I'm sorry.
It has been moved and.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Don't, how many commissioners do we have in the board?
Three. I was the third one, and it was my opinion, I've shared this with staff and the chairman and stuff, that I believe that there was a time when that was an important decision, but I don't believe with the current activities and staff and decision-making of the board that it really needs to have the oversight of three commissioners. One of the reasons I wanted to step down, I love this board. If they'd had their meetings at nighttime, I would not have asked to step off, but I am now working full-time, and they have a meeting at 11:30 on a third Monday. So that's why I stepped off, and I believe that it really is a good thing if we, as commissioners, back away from it and let the board start to be a board again rather than overpowering it.
Sure. And I will say, as a member of that board, the recommendation and the vote by the board was to appoint Mr. Bill Johnson.
And I will say, as a member of that board also, the vote was two-two with the chairman voting, breaking the tie. So that was the outcome of the vote on that particularly.
So if we could first vote with, or vote on Mr. Billy Moy?
Right. And Mr. Moy is from the Arthur Community. Delanta.
Arthur Community.
Delanta Community.
And the other nominee is Bill Johnson.
This is for Mr. Moy.
I think my vote's going, no. My vote should be a no. It was, I probably clicked on it because when the chairman was saying that there had been no second to substitute, I had already hit it, so if we could.
Have the minutes reflect, I think it does not pass as it is.
I've got finger problems at night.
If we could then vote on Mr. Johnson.
So.
Wait a minute. Voting on Mr. Johnson.
The first motion did not pass on Mr. Moy. We are now voting on Mr. Johnson.
Did you, did everybody understand what they were voting on the first?
With the exception of Mr. Colson, who.
I had to correct the vote because I had already.
It was six to three.
I mean, I got fussed at a minute ago because I was late, so this time I'm early.
Getting it right is the motivation.
Motion passes. Moving on to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Colson? Commissioner McLaughlin? Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
I'm glad we weathered the storm and we came out good. Thank you, Lord.
Commissioner Nunley?
No.
Commissioner White?
No comment.
Mr. Vice Chair? Commissioner Huggins? Commissioner Ward?
No comment yet, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we adjourn if there's no further business.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second.
Oh, I got a vote now. Y'all two go close the door.
I wanted to stay.
Meeting is adjourned.